And the next two clauses, thirty-three and thirty-four, really deal with anti-money laundering. And we've seen that there have been amendments to the Proceeds of Crime and Anti-Money Laundering Act and the Prevention of Terrorism Act. However, the specifics that are mentioned under thirty-three-one have not been subject to those amendments, as well as the penalties mentioned in thirty-four-two, the penalties for violation relating to money laundering, terrorism, financing. So our specific request is that those amendments that have been mentioned in this act be reflected either in the clause that has amended those other two acts or within the, and also within the penalties within those two AML laws. And of course, the rationale for this is to have penalties that have been harmonized and for there to be clarity in the laws that have been passed. And the other clause that we're going to deal with is the next one is clause forty-one A and B, forty-one, two and B, forty-one, three and B. And this clause deals with penalties and fines. And we've mentioned before that the penalties that have been mentioned for the industry are very steep. And we understand that penalties and fines are supposed to be punitive. However, if you look at the rest of the fintech industry, even both in Kenya and other jurisdictions, you find that these particular penalties are very high. And so we ask for the current section to be deleted in terms of the penalties as to the higher figures. And we propose, as you might see, for those figures for the individuals, for one A, and then for one B, for the companies, and same for what we have suggested. So one million, two million, two, three, four, up to, you will find, not exceeding seven. So there will still be a penalty for succumbing to the law and not adhering to the rules that have been set. However, the industry will progress and these penalties can always be changed as the industry grows, so that we do not stay for the industry before it grows. Now, what has not been-
What is the benchmark on this one?
The benchmark for these laws has been the fintech laws, so PSP laws, both in Kenya and other jurisdictions, and also virtual assets laws in other countries, because this is the only virtual assets law in Kenya. So for Kenya, we used the PSP laws, remittance laws. And then for, and you'll find that the penalties within the PSP law is actually lower than these penalties. And yet, this is a newer industry than the PSP laws and the remittance companies. And then for, we've also benchmarked from other countries that have draft laws. For example, Rwanda, Botswana, South Africa, Nigeria. And we've also benchmarked other countries that have generally fintech and PSP laws from other countries as well. That's what we've used to come up with the proposals. Okay, thank you. And the last part is the part that's not included within the bill and that can be included. And this is on issuance of stable coins. However, this is very specific to those stable coins that will be issued within Kenya. So the bill does not anticipate that there might be, the current stable coins on the market are mostly pegged to the dollar, the euro, and the rest. So the bill has completely left out that in the very near future, there might be a stable coin that's pegged to the Kenya Shilling. So if a stable coin is pegged to the Kenya Shilling, then the Kenyan government and Kenyan laws have the responsibility of regulating that particular stable coin, the way these other stable coins are being regulated in other countries. So what we have suggested is guidelines on how this Kenya Shilling stable coin would be issued in Kenya, in terms of any legal person that wants to issue, the stable coin issuer and the appointment, the valuation that confirms, and collateralized, backed up fully by reserves within the country, independent auditors to audit those resources, underlying reserve assets, safeguarding, including custodian, regular audits, and also segregating of reserve assets from issuers' assets. And then other rules that the regulatory authority may from time to time decide. So we've also included that as a proposal to be included in the bill, so that we now don't have to come back in a year or two when someone wants to issue a Kenyan stable coin. And then the last one is on tokenization of real-world assets. So this is an aspect that is covered in many of the virtual asset laws in other countries that was also left out in the Kenyan bill. And tokenization of real-world assets is really just doing digital representation of real-world assets. So you'll find digital representation of gold, they've spoken about it, digital representation of real estate, digital representation of public roads. You will find that this is one of the new ways in which they raise capital in the world, and that aspect has also been left out. So we've proposed, first of all, the definition of real-world asset and what that means. And then we've also proposed how tokenization of real-world assets would happen and what that would entail in terms of valuation auditing, really very similar to how you would issue a stable coin in this space. So I've not gone into the other details that were mentioned by the Virtual Asset Chamber. And in case there are any other questions on the Virtual Assets Bill and the proposals, I can take them now.
Thank you so much. Maybe I would ask my colleague, do you have any follow-up on what I presented? So I think, Moshe Mua is also comfortable. We can proceed, the goodness that we are interjecting, so that we save on time.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciating that. We still have, looking at our program, we will be staying here for quite long hours.
I know. Okay, so the next one is Sebastian. He's going to offer clarification on the digital asset tax. Again, our colleagues did most of the work, but maybe in case there's something you didn't understand, then maybe you can understand now. Over to you, Sebastian. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. And I think my job is just to make it as simple as possible, so that we understand what exactly the tax impact is as well. And my colleagues have discussed extensively on that. And so I'm not going to go into, so I'm going to skip a whole lot of stuff. But one thing that is clear for us, for example, as Yellow Card, is that we're also a company incorporated in Kenya. And we pay corporate income tax. We deduct withholding tax on people we trade with. We have employees in Kenya for which we deduct PAYE and remit. On the average, I know we remit about seven million to eight million Kenya shillings every month in terms of PAYE as well. And so when we look at that and compare that with the digital asset tax, we realize that the tax itself is higher than our turnover, which means we'll have to go and borrow money to be able to pay the taxes. So the other team, my colleague mentioned about the percentages, and more often than not, it just goes beyond that, which is your turnover. So if I do three percent or 1.5%, when my revenue is just at max 0.8%, it means that I need to go and get money elsewhere. And what that implies is that it will be difficult for me even to sustain operations in Kenya as well. So one of the things we've done is to look at it to say, one as well, we do not even define what a transfer is. And that is important if we're going to pass a digital asset tax, or else it gives room for ambiguity and becomes very difficult to collect. And you know, I always like to come back as a tax person. One of the main tenets of tax administration is ease of collection, one. And two, the cost of collection needs to be lower than the cost that's collected. So if I'm going to collect twenty million and I need twenty-five million to collect twenty million, then that's a wasted effort, because then I would just be in a deficit as well. And the other issue, key issue as well, is the time on the remittance. Based on the provision, is that at any point there is a transfer, you have to deduct and remit after five days. So which means if I do a transfer on Monday, then I'll have to remit that to KRA on Saturday. If I do on Tuesday, I will do Sunday. If I do on Wednesday, I'll do Monday, which means that every day I will have to be doing remittances to KRA in order to comply with that as well. So these are some difficult things that we look at. And we just decided to just do some example, next page please, just to give you an idea, that if the volume is eight points out, so we just picked some values from members and then say, okay, the revenue on that, which is turnover, or the percentage, is about seventy million, and in 2022, about seventy million. But if you do three percent on the volume, the amount of tax is 260 million, whereas the turnover is seventy million. So there's a clear disconnect. Even when you reduce the rate to 1.5%, you are looking at 130 million tax against 70 million turnover. So I've not even brought in my employees, the cost of rent and everything. This is just still top-line revenue. And the tax is higher, three times higher than the top-line revenue, which means I'm more or less out of the business. If I have to go, I have to even go and borrow money to be able to pay that as well. And when we look at that, you have the exchanges, especially a Yellow Card that is registered in Kenya, that has employees, and then will file and pay corporate income tax as well. And so this tax is in addition to that. And so when you look at it, it's more or less telling the company that we don't want you to be here, because your tax is higher than your revenue. I've not even brought out the expenses I incur, which is necessary for the development of the economy as well. Because the truth is, like I mentioned, in addition to whatever tax we're paying as corporate income tax, the salary we pay employees, we're also deducting PAYE and remitting to KRA. Like I mentioned, on the average, 7.5 million, seven million every month, based on the employees we have here. So if you also look at it as well in terms of multiple taxation, I also brought in another example to show that there is actually a depreciation of the value of the asset, actually about three percent depreciation. And if you look at the whole tax impact, you are looking at about 592% effective tax rate on the revenue you've earned from there, when already you've not even made any money. And yeah, that means you have to go and borrow money to even to pay the tax. You don't have enough cash to be able to address that as well. And like they mentioned, my colleagues mentioned, it's important to know what exactly these things are used for. Now, some of them are used to pay for services. Some of them are used to pay for salaries. And then you can now have the normal cryptocurrency like Bitcoin that you trade for appreciation. Some people just use that to preserve the value of their currency. So for example, if the Kenya Shilling, the value keep on, like the time it was going up and down, you can then decide to say, oh, I need to get a stable coin, which more like gives me stability in terms of the value of my money. But in a recent sense, there's no real appreciation for that, for stable coin. That's why a stable coin is pegged to USD or to a Kenya Shilling, depending. We don't have that now. But the ones who have are either pegged to a gold or pegged to a US dollar as well. So those ones are not really an appreciation. But the way the tax is defined, it means at every point in time, I have to deduct tax and pay, even when I'm not making any money. That means there's just a depreciation. It's just like someone saying, I have a dollar, and then I want to go and exchange a dollar for a Kenya Shilling. I exchange one dollar to 130 Kenya Shilling. Then I have to pay a tax of 1.5% on the 130, even though I may have bought the dollar at 145, when it was 145, and now I'm selling at 128, which is a loss, but I still have to pay 1.5% on the value that I've created as well. So when we looked at this, we now felt, one, we understand that one of the reasons why this task came up is also the part to make sure a lot of people come within the tax net, that there are traders that ordinarily there may not be a way to track. And one of the things we've said is that first, we feel that the law in entirety should be deleted, because that's an additional tax. If a company is already paying corporate income tax, then that is above what exactly? You pay corporate income tax at 30%, and then you need to pay 1.5% on the value, which already, the 1.5% is even higher than your revenue. It knows that it becomes very difficult for you to comply, because like I say, for you to comply, that means you go to the bank and tell them, I need to borrow money to pay tax. That would be very ridiculous, because you don't even have revenue to show that as well. And we also felt that that should be deleted. And we feel that capital gains tax should be introduced. And I'm going to talk about how we feel that should be done. OECD has proposed what we call Crypto Asset Reporting Framework, where the exchanges are required to report transactions, people that trade on their exchanges. And we are proposing that we can define a particular threshold. So you know, we talked about Bitcoin before. Some people are just buying 0.001% of a Bitcoin. And so the value may just be a thousand Kenya Shilling. And if you have to report everything, then there'll be a lot of reporting, and the cost of collection of the tax becomes very high. So we can just say, define a particular threshold. If anybody trades at this particular amount, every quarter, we can then send those details to KRA. And KRA can now know those people that traded on that and be able to go after them and ask them to do their self-filing returns. And also because we at the Digital Exchange, it's easy for us to ascertain what our gain is. We're also proposing a percentage tax. Actually, we propose a 0.5% on the gains, not on the value, earned by the digital asset tax, which can be paid quarterly and then is creditable for the final corporate income tax. Now, what we try to do with this is, even if I made a loss, it means that I have a sort of a minimum tax, I'm paying on my gains. I'm not not paying taxes maybe for another longer period. So even if I'm making a loss, I have some money I'm paying to the coffers of the government. So we are proposing a 0.5% but on gains, not on the transaction value, because then it's on our turnover, not on amount that does not relate to our gain or not as well. And the other part is, we can then define what exactly is a transfer. And we believe that, one, when you withdraw a cryptocurrency, local currency, then that can be considered a transfer. You need to define what it is. Or when you swap a one digital asset for another. So if I use my staple coin to buy a Bitcoin, then that can be considered a taxable event. And these are some, if you look at UK at the moment, that actually is what happens. You define what constitutes a taxable event for the purpose of taxing digital asset transaction. And that at the moment is not defined in any part in the Kenya, in the Finance Bill or the current tax legislation. And then the other part is to reduce the administrative burden on the exchanges. We are asking that instead of the five-day reporting, that we can either be so report at the, either every quarter or every month. But then that gives you enough time to manage our administrative burden as well. The last part, what I want to talk about, but I may likely not talk about, because a lot of people have talked about this today and on Friday, is the issue of carry forward of losses. So maybe if there's a question there, we can answer that. But a lot of people have talked about that. But as startups, that becomes an issue if I'm not able to carry forward my losses. And for a capital-intensive industry, then it becomes an issue, because I have losses and I'm not able to carry them forward. Maybe I project I'll be making profit at year seven, and then as at that period, I cannot even use the losses I've accumulated. Then it becomes a disincentive to invest there. Thank you, and I'll be happy to take your questions or clarifications.
Thank you so much. I think you've made your candid presentation. But probably before we conclude, I don't know, we are only two members. The other colleagues are stretching outside there. Moshe Mua, do you have any? Okay, thank you. Now, listen, it became a bit lucrative to say that you are willing to work with KRA to provide the required data.
Yes.
In your proposal. What came to my mind is then now for KRA to be effective and to be able to derive the intended tax. We all appreciate now, everything has gone system technology. Are you willing?
Yes, that's actually-
To be integrated with KRA system?
Not integration, but it's about, so I don't know how the system is at the moment, which is also one of the things-
But should KRA, I'm asking that.
Yeah, no, what-
Should KRA express interest? Okay, fine, for us to work, let's partner together. Are you willing to let your system be integrated with KRA?
Yes.
If you'd ask.
Yeah.
Thank you. I think if, I think that marks the end of your presentation.
Yes, sir.
Again, as we are telling the chamber in case, because this is a very complex bill that is coming up. And we will be cautious as National Assembly to make the laws that will be there for posterity. And someone said, we want to make Kenya to be the lead in the region and probably in Africa. We'll be glad to make that law, but we want to make it clearly. So we'll be engaging forward until we are very certain. So thank you so much. I think the next group is a group. So I'm holding brief for, so you can, BKF, you're ready? BKF, you're ready, so set yourself ready. We can still be inviting you to remain behind, listen to the other presentation, especially on the issue of carry forward taxes, where we were really, we want to understand exactly what happens in these carry forward losses that are perennial, divert over and over. So welcome, please, you can move to the middle. And please, could you mind to introduce yourself? I think, and your team. We will sit down a little bit for record purpose. While you took over, you said, we'll be introducing us. We will be doing presentation for records, because this is parliamentary procedures. Just introduce your name and any other position you're holding in this particular Yellow Card.
Okay, my name is Idlin Morangi, and I oversee legal affairs for East Africa at Yellow Card.
My name is Sebastian Odemah, and I'm the Tax Director for Yellow Card globally.
My name is Sarah Mbogo. I'm Senior Tax Accountant for the Group, Yellow Card.
Sorry, my name is Beatrice Jagi. I'm a tax partner at Vision Tax Solutions, a consultant supporting the Yellow Card.
Sebastian, you sound an accent from the West African country.
I'm an Nigerian. And so at the moment, I think we have the highest adoption rates, because our tax is favorable. So that can also be an eye-opener as well.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You may take your leave. So BKF, please, you can honorably proceed, take your position. If you look at, the time is almost saying, it's around twenty-four minutes to six. I will also be inviting you to probably concentrate more on areas that have not been touched, unless you feel like it was not well represented and you feel you need to add some few additional information. So you can take the floor, introduce yourself, and proceed with your presentation. I hope your presentation has been also provided. Thank you, yes.
Thank you very much, committee, honorable members of the committee. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to give our submissions on the Finance Bill 2025. My name is Kenneth Kahora, and I'll let my colleague introduce herself.
Good afternoon. My name is Jean Chager.
Great, so I'll not take too much time on the sections that have already been covered earlier, but it'll just allow me to pick it up just to emphasize one or two points. Our first proposal was on Section Two on the Finance Bill, that proposed to amend Section Two of the Income Tax Act, and that is by expanding the definition of royalties to include payments when a distributor is making regular payments. And our suggestion is that this proposal should actually be deleted, and it is in line with international best practice. And there is even a case about three years ago that was ruled by the High Court. And I think when it comes to matters of software, really there are two things that need to be distinguished. And the one is where there is the right to the copyright of the software, vis-à-vis where there is just a right to the copyrighted software. And maybe I'd give an analogy of another intellectual property, maybe an example of a book. So having a distributor deducting, actually, the distribution of software being considered as a royalty is akin to a bookshop having to pay withholding tax for the fact that they are selling books by a specific author. So you can imagine you buy five copies of a book, have it in your library, have it in your bookshop, and then you sell it. And just because you are exploiting, yes, it is, the book is a copyright, but by you selling that book, you do not actually access the intellectual property. It is just a copyrighted book that you're selling. And it is very similar for distributors of software. They do not have any permissions to change that software, so they actually do not have access to their intellectual property in terms of the software. And so we think this is actually a provision that goes against international best practice. And we hope that the honorable committee can take note of our submissions and have this provision deleted. The second one that I think a lot of groups have captured is when it comes to tax losses. And we have seen this provision actually change over years. And first, you know, the tax losses were unlimited. Then it was changed to ten years. No, I think it first went to five years, then it was expanded to ten years. Then now we see this Finance Bill actually proposing to limit again to five years. So from the perspective of the business, it feels a bit, and you can give an example of somebody who's just invested in heavy equipment to manufacture, whatever they are manufacturing. Some of the tax losses could actually be contributed by the fact that they're getting capital allowances. So by the time they're done with getting those capital allowances, it is likely that the five-year period will have passed. And so it will sort of be giving someone a provision, but it will not, they'll not be able to access it, especially if there is high-capital-intensive businesses that they actually are getting into. And still on that issue of the tax losses, it is not very clear what happens to tax losses that were incurred before, when the Finance Act is going to come into place. So it needs to be very clear what happens to tax losses that actually happened before the period when the Finance Act will take place. The next one is Section, Section A, eight, A six of the Finance Bill, which proposes to repeal the provision allowing for expenditure on sports sponsorship here. So this proposal was actually meant to have taxpayers be able to contribute positively to the youth's and sports arena. And I think this is something that a lot of bodies are actually trying to make sure that we can revive our spots. And that is going to keep our youths busy and keep them away from all manner of bad things that, you know, the, what is it called? The betting and alcohol and all other negative things. So we actually think that this provision should be deleted, so that it can give companies that are willing to actually support our sportsmen to have a chance to be able to contribute positively to that industry. The next one, which is closely, I think I mentioned about the investment allowances. So there is a proposal to actually repeal the 100 investment allowance on investments that are made outside Nairobi and Mombasa and the special economic zones. And we feel this is a proposal that sort of, it is taking a step back, because the purpose of this bill was actually to help the areas that are close to the towns to be able to also develop. So if you give a good investment allowance to companies to set out, to set, to set up outside the urban areas, it is actually bringing development to the less privileged. And so once we repeal this section, And so once we repeal this section, then it means that they will want to actually invest where there is already infrastructure and all manner of things. So it is counterintuitive in terms of how resources are going to be spread evenly within the country. Another one similar to that is there was an exemption, a preferential tax rate of fifteen percent for companies who locally assemble motor vehicles. I think this is, it is an ascent industry that we've actually been trying to see. We've seen some companies that are coming to set up electric buses. And so what happens is if you revoke this preferential tax rate, it means that you are actually stifling investments in this sector. And I think when we look at it even from an environmental perspective and in terms of trying to build our own factories here in terms of manufacture of vehicles, it is actually something that would create a lot of jobs. And we think that this proposal should actually be deleted so that it can actually spur further investments in the local manufacture and assembly of motor vehicles. Our next proposal is under section twenty nine B of the Finance Bill. And here, the bill actually proposes to introduce a capital gains tax exemption on transfer of assets to a company where an individual spouse owns one hundred percent of the shareholding. And so if you look at how the act is actually worded, so what this tried to do is actually make it clear that the CGT exemption on companies is when there is an individual spouse. If they transfer from their deceased to a company where spouses own a hundred percent or where a spouse and immediate family, and immediate family includes the children. And so it is actually a welcome provision, but what we are thinking is it can be expanded so that this specific provision can also apply to companies even where there is no spouse, such that it can be an exemption where there is immediate family members only. So we talk about the spouse, the spouse and immediate family members, and also immediate family members. So that in case there is no spouse, it still brings that certainty on how the exemption will be applied. So that marks my changes when it comes to the corporation income tax. I'll quickly.
Maybe before you proceed, when you introduce the family members, doesn't this amount to that party? I would, that's number one. Number two, earlier when you were talking about clause, was it clause eight? Or was it clause, the second clause on the issue of royalties? And you are trying to divine, to separate the meaning of royalties in relation to the distribution. Is it by law, are you reflecting by law, just best practices, that you want to focus at where the property of that particular lies? That particular commodity or whatever is the asset lies as where the royalty should be made. And I can imagine on the issue of explorations and extractions, where does property lie at that point? Because I know royalty is applicable where you extracting, maybe for purpose of export or for purpose of any other. But at the point of the relationship between the owner, maybe the land owner and the particular asset we had in question, royalty emanates from there. So how do you want to defuse the heart of trading on that particular royalty asset? So that the person playing in between creates the value through the distribution? Why do you insist? How do you really clarity on how to separate? Thank you.
Okay, I think I'll take the first question. So when it comes to the issue of the exemption, the CGT exemption.
Just a minute.
Yeah, I just want to add another question on section twenty eight B. Where there's a proposal to revoke the preferential tax rate of fifteen percent. You are saying we delete this. But from my understanding, the five year period is enough for a company to mature up. So the company should be able to pay full tax after five years trading. So I, I don't know why you want that deleted.
Okay, very good. Thank you for that, the questions.
And as, and as you respond and try to reflect on the aspect of N B V in a good investment. Always looks at a given period of time. And it always provides other stages or now cash flows are beginning to come in over time. And cash flows are meant to cover the cost. So if you carry forward like someone was saying in definite losses, we still left with a question, what motivates?
Have you finished presentation? Oh, yeah, maybe, maybe on the same. Section twenty eight B two, on this preferential corporate tax of fifty percent for companies that can construct over added units annually. Because I was wondering, you know, constructing houses, houses is a process. It's a process because as far as the chimney, foundation, when you do a slap, you know, slap, it has to take like twenty one days to, to chew. I was wondering how many companies can be able to do hundred units annually to completion? You know, you know, I'm just looking at the start in January and by December. Yeah, they have completed. How many companies can, can be able to do that? Because I, I, I think maybe probably nobody is taking that. Then I was wondering, they send this over two hundred and fifty million for companies which are setting up operations in outside Nairobi and in Mombasa. Maybe probably you have a data how many have been able to do that. Because see, when, when you see it traditionally provoking a revocation or deletion of a, of such a thing, maybe they are seeing this number, maybe nobody is taking it or something like that. Yeah.
Great. Thank you for the questions, honorable committee. So in no specific order, maybe the first one I'd want to capture is the capital gains tax exemption when it comes to shares owned in a company. Yeah, so by bringing in family members, family members are actually already covered. But the issues with, with, the issue with how the, the act is worded is that it has to be a spouse and immediate children. And so it brings a lot of uncertainty, what happens if it's only family members, yeah? Because there is a requirement to be a spouse, so it's spouse, spouse and children. And so what we are saying is it can actually be expanded so that it can also include the other children. No, not other children, the children, sorry, the family members, the one that has been used together with the spouse. Yeah, so on the issue of royalties, we're just trying to, to break and try to separate what the sale of a software vis a vis the sale of the copyright to the software. So, and that's why I was trying to look at a software like an, a physical item, yeah? So if we, if I was giving an analogy of a book, a book can actually be copyrighted, yeah? Facing Mount Kenya is a copyrighted book and nobody can be allowed to replicate it without getting the, the owner to agree to it. And so there needs to be a distinction such that if I am just selling a copyrighted book, then that should not really be taken to be that I'm exploiting the intellectual property. It's only is just a sale of a book vis a vis if somebody took that book and added a few things in the book and went to sell it in the market. Now that would be a very clear part that they have actually used the rights to the intellectual property and have used it to make their own product which they're exploiting in the market. So we're just trying to do the distinction between the two. And I think when it comes to a software reseller, all they're just doing is being an intermediary. They're not changing the actual I P, they're not changing the actual software. So that's who we're thinking that it will actually be very detrimental for that industry. And it is against actually international best practice. And that was our opinion on that. I think for the issue of the affordable housing units, yeah, you have a very good point. I think what actually captures you is, as you're saying, who can actually be able to meet those requirements? And my thinking is that just by the fact that this clause actually was being brought to try and support these affordable housing initiatives. And maybe the question should be if maybe a hundred houses is too many, why not move it to fifty? Because the point is that we want to actually encourage people to invest in that specific sector. When it comes also for the incentives above two hundred and fifty million, I think we don't have that data, but maybe on a follow up, we can, we can try and pick, pick out some of those examples. And maybe we can present them to you at a, maybe at a later stage if need be. I think there was one more, just let me check. Yeah, I think when it comes to the issue of the tax losses, maybe what the honorable committee can consider is maybe if you can grant the commissioner powers to be able to give an extension of those tax losses and maybe give conditions. Maybe if the tax losses are due to heavy capital investments that you've given this taxpayer rightfully for investing. So it, maybe that can be one of the approaches that can be used. But the point is that there can be genuinely companies that are unable to extinguish those tax losses in five years. And you can imagine when a company is starting out, you know, you choose different strategies such as bundling products. You'll try to reduce your price so that you can actually get a footing in the market. So at that point, there is really not much profit to be played around with up until when the company is able to stabilize. So we think that there needs to be some rethinking about how maybe we can not punish the genuine people who have incurred tax losses because of maybe capital allowances. Yeah, so I think that answers the questions.
Okay, you are done?
There was mine on fifteen, fifteen percent preferential tax rate on.
The locally assembled vehicles.
Motor vehicles, yeah.
Yes. So what happens is if this proposal is actually goes into the act, it will mean that anybody who comes in after that point will not be able to access the fifteen percent. They will just have to pay taxes like any other person. And so what's happening is you're losing that incentive that was bringing people to actually invest in this specific sector. And I think you can see the car companies, we are seeing a lot of car companies coming out from, you know, South Korea, China. And there are tech companies that have actually gone in to invest in motor vehicles. So it is an industry that can actually has the potential to grow. And I think if we were to rethink about how we tax some of these people and give incentives, then we can be able to make our locally African made brands that we can drive around here. So that, that was our thoughts on the preferential rate on local manufacture. And there are some safeguards that had been put so that to make sure that people just don't import everything in terms of spare parts and assemble them here and sell them as if it's a Kenyan vehicle. There had to be a certain, a threshold for the number of original equipment manufacturer parts that are actually made in Kenya. So it is, it is an industry that flows not only the motor vehicles, but there is also the inputs to the manufacture of the motor vehicles.
Okay. You can move to V A T.
Okay, so I'll quickly go through the V A T sections. And the first was amending section thirty six D and thirty six E of the Finance Bill. And this was just changing the status of goods used direct and exclusive use for the construction of tourism facilities and recreational parks. Yeah, and so what happens if you move this from VAT exempt to standard rated? Then it means the actual tourists will end up having to pay a bit more for this. And our thinking was, you know, something like a tour operator, their services are VAT exempt. So we're thinking in the same line, if you're trying to encourage investments in the industry, then it would be good to make sure that we do not increase the prices that will eventually end up being paid by the, by the tourist. And you can imagine for an industry like tourism, is actually tourists are free to go to any, any other country. So we need to be able to have some things that will assist our, you know, our tourism sector to be able to grow and attract the right kind of tourists. And that also applies, it is similar to when it comes to the motor vehicles. There's an exemption for when they manufacture motor vehicles for the transport of tourists. And that's similarly been moved from VAT exempt to standard rated. And I think maybe we should give it a bit more thoughts on what the impact will be in terms of the industry and the competitive of Kenya as a tourist destination in East Africa. Similar thing is the, the VAT status of the construction of, of hospitals, specialized hospitals with a capacity of over fifty beds. I think it is similar thinking that as part of the universal health pillar of trying to improve access to healthcare for the Kenyans, actually changing the VAT status of this will also increase the cost of healthcare. Because ideally this V A T is going to end up increasing the costs of constructing these facilities. Our next one was also the reclassification of transportation for sugarcane factories. So when sugarcane is moving from the farms to the factory, they are currently zero rated. And the proposal is actually to change this to exempt. And similarly, this will have a knock off effect in terms of increasing or actually reducing the margins that are going to be available for the farmers. And for the sugarcane industry is, is one that is really struggling. And so any additional taxes that are introduced will negatively impact the whatever is earned. So maybe a suggestion would be if the intention is actually to classify this as VAT exempt, then it, it would be more beneficial to actually scrap the V A T in the first place so that you can end up supporting the industry as a whole. Similar thing for the manufacture of local, locally manufactured mobile phones. Same thing, we're proposing that this change be deleted. And in the similar case, if you introduce VAT, if you move the phones from zero rated to VAT exempt, means that they'll not be able to claim their input VAT and they'll end up pushing this to the customer. So maybe a proposal that could be considered is maybe could we, just like the same way for the fertilizer, could we consider the inputs in the manufacture of this mobile phones to be VAT exempt? That would, that would sort of shoulder the heavy, but then the, the input V A T that will actually be, end up being charged on the end customer. And that sums up the presentations we had for the V A T. I don't know if you have any questions on that?
Sure, if you allow me, if you allow me to just call from B K F. This item number four, that is clause thirty six, the issue of deletion of, I think this is first, second schedule to first schedule of locally assemblies of manufactured phones. Do we have data of this particular entity today exist? Because there before, I'm not, not quite through about it, but most of the players here import fully finished. I don't know whether it's true, but we really have entities concerned that are dedicated their work to procure source for parts, then they come and affix locally for market, for Kenyan market.
Okay, for this one, we also do not have the data, but it is something that we can actually go and try to dig in and find out what actually happens on the ground.
Actually, if you remember last year when we were doing, it was last year when we were doing this thing on border border. So it was a company, Quetu. Quetu, they have been assembling locally, assembling, assembling locally funds. They look quite good. So I, I think there are several companies which are, which are assembling those, those, those whatever. But my worry is that this is a very young sector, only five years. And, and you have tried to kill it through taxation. So at times I don't understand how, how government operates. But I'm quite sure there's some companies, Quetu, Quetu, they are assembling. But I'm, I'm quite sure there is some companies, Quetu, Quetu, they are assembling. And basically, they manufacture and sell to, to Boda Boda owners. You know, they also, they are also giving out.
Yeah?
Watu, yes, it's watu. Yeah, they give to the, actually you can even hire those phones, yes.
Great, yeah, we actually aligned on that, yeah. Okay, so just to finish it, as finish up, when the next is the Tax Procedures Act. And I think a lot of people have actually mentioned this, section fifty-two of the Finance Bill, which proposes to give the commissioner powers to access trade secrets and customer data that's, that is collected in the course of business. And yeah, our, our thinking is similar is there needs to be, you know, some level of privacy and, and the data that is collected should be able to be meaningful for some specific item, yeah? So for example, I don't see how collecting somebody's blood group is going to assist in trying to raise additional revenue. But what we are thinking is what would be important is actually getting financial data and not just any sort of data. And so we feel that this proposed, this proposal could actually negatively impact on fundamental rights and freedoms of the taxpayers. So it needs to be specific that whatever data is being collected is actually assisting in terms of raising revenues. The last proposal was in terms of section fifty of the Finance Bill, which was proposing to extend the timelines for the commissioner to be able to verify VAT refunds and actually to determine refunds or offsets there. And the proposal to increase this time is basically, it, it just lengthens the process of taxpayers trying to get their, their refunds. And the issue we, we see with this, the problem is not even with, in terms of getting the approvals, it is in terms of when does a taxpayer actually get that refund? So anything that actually pushes the, the timeline further is keeps taxpayers waiting for longer for their tax refunds. So if we propose that this can be deleted so that we are able to clear the backlog, then maybe in future periods we can consider extending these timelines. But for now, I think it's taxpayers already feel very shaken when it comes to matters of refunds from the commissioner. So thank you very much for your time. Take up any more questions if you may have.
Yes, members, any, any question?
Thank you, Chair. If I go first. This particular clause that touches clause fifty-two, and what you're calling section fifty-two is clause fifty-two on the issue of data protection where commissioner is seeking to be empowered to access trade secrets. Underline the word trade secrets. You've given a very emotive example. What does commissioner has to do with the blood group? Or the, hmm, the passionate discussion between partners. You know, the phone has played a very pivotal role in sorting out emotional issues in relationships. Actually, what does commissioner has to do with that? But again, you understand we are shifting to the digital world. Right now, all informations are taken through digital world, especially business transactions. In your own understanding and in your own view, who do you want commissioner? Because the work of commissioner is to ensure he meets the targets that are set for him, that is going to finance the budget. In your own view, how then better can the commissioner be empowered to be able to mine the rightful information, especially during assessment? You know, tax is about salary assessment, but when the commissioner has been forced to undertake compliance, assessment, audits, you know, how do you think commissioner can best work around this one so that he can mine the right information that can maximize his taxation?
Okay, thank you for that question. I think in your opinion, you've been seeing there has been a lot of additional requirements for taxpayers, say for example with the tax procedures, electronic invoicing regulations. So we are seeing that the revenue authority is actually able to access a lot more data. But I think what we're just trying to make sure is that the data needs to be financial data such that it does not go to a point. And, and I want to give the analogy of, not really an analogy of, I think there was a time when there was some issue, I can't remember what was being introduced, and there was an issue about whether you use M-Pesa or cash. And, and you could see whenever you say that, that you want to introduce visibility in terms of M-Pesa transactions, you'd see people shifting from use of one medium to the other. And so we are looking at this case when you.
You're confirming it is the people who are tricking, not even the commissioner. And the commissioner is fully aware now that these people, you introduce one mode, they want to shift to another mode. And the entire objective or the end result is that they want to evade or to avoid, probably avoiding would be better because it's about documentation. They want to evade.
No, Moshe, these are very, these are very serious and tricky clause. When is somebody saying that the commissioner to access trade secrets and customer data? Of what the business in this country, do you know the meaning of it? You know, they can have data for your data on your account in the bank. You have access to your data on M-Pesa. And this is on tax purposes. So, so can you imagine your data, somebody having it somewhere? So, so is, you remember this clause was there, last, last whatever? And it brought a lot of it, a debate on it. Yeah, so, so, so it's a clause which need to be handled with a lot of care. Otherwise, you can be so exposed that, that you, you don't, you have no escape route. So, so, so maybe what is your views on this? And that's what Moshe is asking.
Yeah, so currently even with, with the way the Tax Procedures Act is, the commissioner has powers to actually go and talk to a vendor to provide details on you. So they already have the powers to be able to get whatever information they require. So the question is now when it comes to customer data and trade secrets, think about in the case of a professional farm. If a client was to come and ask me for advice on how to structure their business and carry could come and access that data, you're basically telling this guy that don't come and talk to the professionals because there is a link to the revenue authority to do that. So that's what we're trying to avoid, that customers do not go to hospital because they are afraid that carry is going to access their data because they visited the hospital and the hospital would be required to give the customer data. So it, it's just, as you're saying, it's on the sensitivity of the information that is required. I think there needs to be some clarity so that you do not interfere with the fundamental rights and also do not make people stop accessing professional services, for example, because of some of these fears.
You very much for that good presentation. And we are going to consider the views of your guests, among others, because there are so many. Thank you very much. You can take leave or you can still wait for the next presentation. Members, we have only one organization called We Care. Let, let us hear how they care for us. Yes, welcome. Nelly Chepke Moi, the one who is presenting, right? You can actually introduce yourselves, yeah?
Good evening, honorable members of the committee. My name is Aquila Mokaya. I am the Executive Director of We Care Youth Organization. At this point, I'll allow my fellow colleagues to introduce themselves.
Good evening, Honorable Committee. I'm Mike Mutai, I'm from Allevated Foundation. I'm appearing as a partner to the We Care CBO. And I'm looking forward to having this meaningful conversation.
Good evening, members. My name is Nelly Chepke Moi. I serve at the capacity of manager, policy and advocacy at We Care Organization. Thank you.
The, the person who is supposed to, to present can, can go on.
Okay, I will be presenting with my colleague Nelly. I want, I would want to start with clause number three, that exempts, increases the exemption of PDMs for private employees from two thousand to ten thousand Kenyan shillings. As a CBO, we actually support the proposed amendment. However, we have reservations because it could be abused and could be an avenue for tax evasion in the sense that the employers would want to, not to declare the real amount of money, but declare that the above money, above their normal taxable income amounts to PDMs. So we'd also want to say that we should, the committee should consider including safeguards like capping mechanisms.
So you are, you are not for that clause? You are fifty-fifty?
We support it.
You support it?
Yeah, but however, we'd want to look at the aspect of evasion by saying that we could, we could include.
Can be misused?
Yes.
Chair, from your point of view, when the provision say, the provision says from two thousand to ten thousand. And while you know this is, PDM is a cost that an employee incurs outside the premise of employment in the course of duty. So limit to ten thousand, isn't that a cap? Or what other provisions or narratives would you wish to be? In your own view, it can be included other than limiting at ten thousand?
It can be limited at ten thousand, of course. However, we'd want to look at the frequency. So let's say, for example, I'm supposed to be paid a salary of thirty thousand, let's say forty thousand in one month. But my employer decides to say that I'm being paid ten thousand weekly as PDMs. Therefore, they do not declare that I'm being paid forty thousand. So my taxable income is not there, is at nil.
Actually, actually, this, this, this are clause, eh? Because we, we first a similar clause for public. Is it, did you do this?
Public.
Did you do, public servant? This is for, for both. But before we had passed for?
It was for public?
It was for public.
So we have considered private.
So now we have considered public, so private, if I remember. And that off? You don't mean I trust you? If you say no, it's no.
Chair, 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 you remember very well, we just said on the tax amendment laws. And the amendment then it only spoke about public sector. So now this is to bring about uniformity and, you know, the law also looks at the equity. So focusing on private sector. But the question raised by the, the witness here is supposing, of course, number one, you will agree for that person to be an employee. There must be terms of employment that is as per the appointment. But then you're saying this person decides to add more, I mean, for the purpose of motivation and to increase the salary through PDMs. So would there be confirmation that this person traveled and worked out of office? Could there be confirmation? Because anything without that confirmation, releases, surrenders, you know, there will be all that together. I'm expecting that the commissioner will be looking at those ones to confirm that indeed this person traveled.
Yeah, I want to agree with you. If there would be a way, then would require possibly the employees now to submit rather maybe receipts, for example. That could be a way in which the commissioner could use to justify for the PDMs to be paid. I hope that answers.
I think if you are given a PDM, there's a way you have to surrender. Somehow you have to surrender, either, like for example, as we go, you, if you leave the country, for example, you surrender with, with the boarding passes and, and the passport to show that you went, yeah? And to me, these are good thing because even when you look at private, private sector, private sector, they rarely give PDMs. The rarely people travel, apart from NGOs. Others are working from eight to eight. Okay.
Yeah, there's an example, I think I've come across that, where because you know for pay as you want, the limit is, is it around twenty, twenty-four thousand? So the employer decides to appoint an employee with a salary package of twenty-four thousand, which is the minimum, that will not qualify for pay as you want. And then decides to pay the rest through allowance. But now, how they're going to justify traveling allowance minus actual travel might be an issue, but I'm aware somewhere they were adding additional one during appointment, saying that we will pay you forty, but we will declare twenty-four, the rest of it will be paying you in cash.
Okay, let's go, Nelly?
Okay, so we are actually agreeing that this is a good cleanup for inclusion of the private sector. So in agreement with you on that. I will move into the next number, which is clause five. Our second issue is talking of clause five, which seeks to amend subsection one of section ten of the income tax by introducing withholding tax on the supply of goods to public entities. We want to say that we are proposing some reinforcing to this amendment with strong safeguards as well to prevent cash flow challenges, especially for the SMEs and local suppliers. And even now, it will also ensure some bit of transparency. And we want to appreciate it because we appeared before this same committee last year in November during the tax amendment proposals. So we are already now acknowledging that this, this already exists. It already sailed through via the Tax Laws Amendment Act, which came into act or rather came, or rather took effect on twenty-seventh of December. So we are only acknowledging that it is there, it sailed through, but we would like to propose some reinforcement on it because public procurement is a major area of economic activity. Yet, we have many other suppliers remaining outside the tax net in the country. So if there's no question, I will move to the third point, which is on clause, clause eight, that seeks to amend section fifteen-four of the Income Tax Act, which introduces a limitation that business losses may be carried forward for a maximum of five years for startups and other businesses. For us as a youth group, because I want to believe we're also speaking for majority of the youth populace in the country, having engaged them at the county level, we oppose this proposal of the limitation because we feel it allows indefinite carryforward of losses. And for us, I know we are acting at a capacity of a CSO, but if we decide tomorrow we want to be a startup or a social enterprise for that matter, we feel that this, this proposal, especially for those who may want to feature in in the agriculture or tech space, that may be youth-led again, being a marginalized populace. We feel that limiting these laws carryforward will limit the early-stage growth of most startups, looking at the angle of being youth-led. I don't know what you think about that.
We, we, we listen to you, only that I wanted to know if you're asking that question.
Okay.
How does a business, eh, call, or how does a business entrepreneur by youth look like and a business entrepreneur by other person look like in that part, for that purpose? Because I know economic environment is same, it's not discriminative in terms of age.
And, and I, I know the youth is, the youth is quite impatient. Even for that five years' rest, making profits, making losses. It may not, eh, you, you, you are impatient. I mean, you want to become millionaire like yesterday.
You are assuming though.
So, 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 eh, eh, we are, we are concerned. But you see, our concern is that there are, there are companies which have been declaring losses perpetually. I mean, they, they never declare profits, and you know that. So, so, so that's the concern here, so that after five years, they should start paying taxes. So, 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 Nelly, we can try this, we see, but I'm very sure the youth are quite impatient. There is no youth who is going to start a business, make loss for a year, and the next year is going to be there, and a funga yoke too.
And Chair, any business is as, any volumes in the business is as good as the capital. You inject little capital. You inject little capital, of course, the margin or the return will be as equal as the capital. You inject huge capital level, the return will be as equal, and of course, surrounded with the risks. Thank you, but proceed, we are getting.
Okay, so just to answer the two questions bef- that you've asked before my colleague proceeds. Uh, the reason we are raising this is for rather the, or rather, we want to have a situation where we are reducing the tax equity, because if you look now at the larger corporations, they may have an advantage of tax planning advantages that allow them, them to absorb such changes very quickly compared to those that are now starting up. Yeah.
Just pause it.
Um, I'll go to clause twelve, which seeks to amend section eighteen of the Income Tax Act by introducing a subsection that will allow the commissioner to enter into an advanced pricing agreement valid for a period not exceeding five consecutive years by a, by a person who undertakes transactions contemplated under section eighteen three and section eighteen A. We support this proposal majorly because it's going to reduce profit shifting um to probably other, to save havens, thereby reducing the amount of tax that is uh collectable by our own, our union authority.
I assume there is no question, so I'll move to the next one. Um, that is.
In fact, in a, in any case, just to proceed, allow us to react at the end of it, so that.
Just proceed, finish.
We don't stop you, just eh.
So I'll move to number five, which is on clause nine. It seeks to amend the third schedule to the income tax that seeks to update the graduated scale of tax rates. Um, and this is talking about the gratitude, having an exemption of one point five M million and pension payments below three hundred thousand. We would want to say that we are supporting this proposal because we feel it clears the air on whether, the question that was around gratitude, on whether it was subject to income tax since it is being paid on the expiry of a fixed term contract. So we feel this is a welcome move, although um we may, because we are also engaging um, or rather, I'll ask that question later, but we feel that this is a welcome proposal because then it gives clarity of gratitude being subject to income tax.
I'll proceed to clause thirty six A, which states that um it seeks to amend section A, pattern of the first schedule to the value-added tax by moving the taxable goods for construction use and equipping specialized hospitals with a minimum bed capacity of fifty from being VAT zero-rated to exempt. We, of course, oppose this reclassification because it's going to raise the prices for health generally, because if now a, a hospital cannot ask for the tax refunds that they're supposed to receive from this um construction use, then they are going to have to get the money from the patients who come to um be treated.
Number seven is on clause fifty, that amend subsection two of section forty seven B of the Tax Procedures Act by extending the period of claiming tax refunds from the initial ninety days to a hundred and twenty. Would like to pro- oppose this proposal and say that um for many small and medium enterprises, we feel they rely hugely or timely on these refunds, especially the VAT. So for paration or cash flow, delaying these refunds by thirty more days, we feel like will increase some financial strain and other risk layoffs of businesses in Kenya. So we also feel that this amendment does not address the need for interest or penalties, penalties and uh gotten on delayed refunds beyond the proposed a hundred and twenty day capping. Uh, moving on to number eight, on clause fifty-two, that seeks to amend section fifty-nine A of the Tax Procedures Act by deleting the subsection one B, and this was the point, chair was talking about how crucial it is. We also want to ask the committee to oppose or rather not allow this to happen because we feel, without even further explanation, it poses a risk of data breaches for taxpayers in that sense. So it's actually opening up a kind of abuse by the commission. Number nine is on clause fifty-six, which seeks to introduce subsection five A to section eighty-nine of the Tax Procedures, which shall allow the cabinet secretary, upon recommendation of the commissioner, to waive the whole or part of any penalty or interest imposed under this act. So while we recognize the need for fairness uh and administrative justice in the tax system, we add the incorporation of clear checks and balances to prevent abuse, to ensure consistency, and uphold public trust in the tax administration of the country. And maybe just to finish, we also wanted to seek clarity, we are done with our issues, but we had two questions because seeing as we also engage at the county level, would maybe want to seek clarity uh from this committee, because looking at uh the, the CFSPs from the counties, uh it is a requirement for them to align with the budget policy statement. So now that we are on revenues for the national government, what then happens to the counties? Because they are also having their own source revenues collection. So seek clarity on that, thank you.
Yeah, um, uh, I, I know, Moshimu Ruto, having worked in counties, you'll be able to, to answer that one. Now, um, you, are you through?
Yes.
Thank you very much, um. Members, any, any question on this, eh, Moshimu Awula? Before we give to former CC, well, finance, CSE, my chief officer, something like that. But before I give him, um, I'm just wondering, section thirty-six E, construction equipping of specialized uh hospitals of fifty beds capacity. Um, I'm just wondering, even if we don't, now they are, they are enjoying the, the, the VAT refunds eh? But do they actually transfer those benefits to the patients? Because healthcare is one of the most expensive, uh, most expensive uh thing in this country. And, you know, you are talking about specialized beds, you know, this is high, quite high, high-level hospital, not the normal hospital of uh, yes, the normal hospital. These, these are private hospital, quite highly specialized. Do they actually transfer those things to, to patients? That's number one. Number two, um, I was looking at this tax refunds extension of ninety days to one, one twenty days. Uh, to me, the motivation for this is that eh, you know, government needs money to fund activities. Now, if they refund with the, if they extend for another thirty days, they have a new way to spend that money as they collect others to refund. And I think these are, these are, these are revenue measure, by the way, the way I'm looking at it. But you can, you can answer the, the first one, uh maybe Ruto can.
Mr. Ruto, thank you so much. I'm here to hear the voice of the gentleman along together with them. It's like this time round, eh, we care is dominated by wo- women, but it's very, and I think, chair, I want to applaud this.
No, the, the, the gentleman would thank, would thank the committee.
But allow me, chair, to applaud this particular team. Uh, listening to them, you can always expect the level of understanding you're giving us on this particular discussion. However, you want to reduce your salary to be youth, but you are well-reached, eh, eh, well-endowed with knowledge about taxation. But I've expected, other than agreeing only on the issue of PDMs, I've expected you, people who are very futuristic, hopeful of the growth of our economy, because we still enjoy these ambitions, to also give us proposals that we, and you're doing this particular laws, how better can we enhance our own ordinary revenue? If, if you look at, because shifting from this one, reducing the target from our own ordinary revenue implies we have to borrow. Because our budget, as you, as it is right now, whether we want to try as much as possible to reduce, it is like a fixed budget because of the situation, debt level, demand for county governments, like you asked at that question, and the rest. So I was expecting your moderate way of saying, even from our hand as youth for Kenya. This is an area that we could encourage the commissioner to deepen focus on this or the cabinet secretary for national treasury. On your question, it is very vital, but I just wanted to remind uh ourselves that, you know, the constitution has demagged at the levels of the two governments. The role of the national government in this particular discussion is to finance a budget, a national budget that provides what we call division of revenue. So when and from the budget policy statement, counties were advised to develop the ceilings, CFSPs to provide the ceilings. But then finally, from the final estimates that have been arrived, after the division of revenue, passage of division of revenue, which was done before we proceeded for recess, that one now will guide them in es- working on their estimates. The rest of it is their own source revenue. So they'll be having their own independent finance bill that will be guiding on raising their ordinary revenue or own source revenue to fill up their own budgets. Because in general, every county have got different budgets. Some counties like Nairobi, Mombasa, Naro, which eh they're endowed with resources enough to collect a lot, their budgets are higher.
Even Majako.
Even Majako's here. Some counties in the remote areas, even if they are whatever of ambitious own source revenue, they will never collect, some of them collect around two hundred million, others that can collect up to thirty billion. That's why the level of development in this county may not be the same. So uh I think for counties, we don't discuss here. The only thing counties are expecting, and they should be supporting, is to support meeting the target by national government, so that they're able to receive their transfers in totality.
So now, that's the best question, best answer you can get by somebody who is an expert in that line.
Okay, thank you.
So I am going to answer the first question that you asked on clause thirty-six E. I'd want to believe that as expensive as uh the private hospital would be right now, it is not exempt. So just imagine if we take away the tax refund bit, how expensive would it be? It would be unreachable, like even for the common man, who can afford?
This is, this is specialized, eh? This is not just ordinary hospital.
Yes.
These are hospitals, Narobe Hospital.
Yes.
Angaka, which government money goes there?
Those who have insurances.
Chair, maybe allow me to help our sister here to understand the obligation of zero-rated. You know, when you zero-rate an item, it means the government of Kenya will pay for you.
Yes.
So you come up with your idea, develop a facility, the facility now procure this particular expensive specialized bed, which most of them are operate on a monopolistic environment. So you go there, by the time you're going there, the level of care you are given is tight with the toughest level of premier, especially when it's insurance. You and I, you understand, when you go pay cash and when you pay insurance. Now, the consumer, who is the patient, at the end of the process of medication and treatment, you're given the bill, the insurer pays. What Moshimu is asking, by the time you're asking the government of Kenya, from the little earned taxes from other sources, you spare parts of money to go and give back this person, who is monopolistic, allow me to use that for this discussion, where you don't determine, you don't know how much is earning as a profit, and then over and above that one, you also give him additional money as a capital. So what the question is, who has data that this has actually benefited Kenyans? Because this one cannot be found in level four, that is, guess it's level four where I come from, you'll not find that one. In our dispensary, you will not find this one, where any other Kenyan would go there. So for this purpose, I don't know whether, what KARE knows about this, but to speak the truth, how does this value transfer to a Kenyan?
Um, I hear you, but the incentive of, of zero-rating also that you get the private sector that can, that has the muscle to purchase such, that was the, that's what I believe was the principle initially before zero-rating it. So in a way, if the commissioner would look for a way to cap, that would have been the best um, best way to think about it, instead of having to move it from being zero-rated to exempt, because now it's going to reduce, it's now going to take away the incentive such that there'll be no other common Kenyan who has the money to like buy or get this product, who's going to be willing to get into the market, because now it means that they're not going to be refunded. The incentive would not be there anymore.
Okay, of course, for example, they are not supposed to pay VAT. What they are doing is only that it increases the cost of acquisition, which, and this equipment can be useful for more than one year, it can serve for five years, you know, you can amortize over time. Uh, but only debate we are asking is this one, that you've collected money from pay as you want, you've collected from other VAT. Then, once you've collected, before you dispense this money in doing roads or buying eh medical applications, drugs by KMSA, you set as, you leave some money to give to an investor, who, and you know, Kenya, we are so kuru, you cannot limit pricing, we are free market, this, willing buyer?
Willing seller.
Willing seller. But this person knowing that he is providing a premier service, this premier service, until and when the government is able to provide substitutes, that's when you can feel the impact of this one. Otherwise, as it is right now, we are hating what the commissioner is saying and the cabinet secretary is saying, we are loo- we are paying much in terms of tax expense. You know, the allowances, exemptions, which goes up to five hundred and sixty billion annually, that if you looked at it, is more or less equal to what we call budget deficit of around seven hundred. That if we avoid this one, we can reduce borrowing. So the question is, the general question that Kenyans are asking, how do we derive this benefit to me?
And you see, even this, this zero-rated, they will still go and claim eh the input VAT.
Yes.
That's number one. Number two, they don't even reduce that cost to the patients. So they are going to want to, one, they will input the VAT on the final product. Then, they also charge, they go to claim, right, VAT from KARE. So do the, see, secondly, I've asked you, who goes for this specialist, whatever, hospital? There are people with the money.
Yes.
Do they actually care if, if, if eh the whatever, if you go with your card, do you really care? Wachawalipe. Wachawalipe, we have to finance the budget.
I hear you.
You hear me?
Yes.
The people pay, pay for those, the, the, is the care, we care for you and this gentleman, there are people with the money, so wachawaliphe. Your person now, he, he, he found drugs in government hospitals. So, yeah, the gentleman, you, you done?
So before the gentleman speaks, you had asked about the ninety to one twenty days. And possibly the reason I would say we are opposing it is because it does not address the need for interest, because as we see it, this um, the tax claims, the refund claiming here is not a privilege, but it is a legal entitlement. And we have an example, you could, and this is actually an opportunity for you to even go benchmark. In South Africa, they have a progressive tax jurisdiction, that is, they do the um process of refunds within thirty to sixty days.
Well, government is broke, if you can pay for us, we can go.
The government.
The other day, you, you, you saw, you saw uh KICC locking our offices, so we have no money to travel. But, 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 but you see, these refunds eh?
Yeah.
That's why we are trying to move from zero-rating to exempt, so that, actually, that's the whole thing. Uh, because if you look at even the claims for refunds are too huge, and there are not many companies which do like this. So, so that's why we are trying to move from zero-rating to exempt, so that at least the pressure on the claims goes down. And this, to me, this is a measure on that, eh, expand from ninety days to one, to one twenty days, so that at least government has a really way of looking for money to refund.
That's what you came for, if you look at, now, we'll tell you why, the treasury be. That's what you're coming, if you look at now, will tell you why the treasury bills, the domestic borrowings is going up, because there's no money, I mean, commissioner is not collecting enough, and again, it's the needs, county government need their money, they don't want to receive, you see, they complain always, they lament, they're in arrears.
Even the CDF, we are not.
CDF, I think we've got an, almost, the CDF that has gone to counties, we are at around forty percent now, and we are in the last bit of the year, so we even, we are already prepared, there will be arrears on some commitments.
What if that then makes me question you, that as we seek to have the new measures, do we have an impact assessment or other status for us to be given as the public? The measures that have been implemented before we introduce the new ones that we are trying to seek, what is the current status?
Tax measures?
Yes.
Now, we ask, eh, we ask, eh, can be, what, treasury, to give us, yes, but I'm very sure they don't have, okay. Eh, um, gentleman?
Yeah.
You know, you know, you are the one who has not even spoken.
I spoke, introduced myself. Well, since most of the clauses have been covered by, you know, my colleagues and the previous teams that are here before me, maybe allow me to close our session maybe. Okay. First of all, honorable chairman and members of the committee, thank you for the opportunity that you've given us to present, eh, our proposals, and given the public participation, we do understand that, eh, our inputs, eh, not only help to promote a fair bill, but also supportive bill that, eh, spurs economic growth and sustainable development for not only the youth and also, you know, you members as well. So thank you very much.
Chair, so that you can conclude, eh, allow me to applaud again this team, looking at them, they are representative of the group who have been planted GNC, and I was expecting, this year I was very much prepared to have a frequent team of these people participating. Unlike last time, after participation or public participation, while we were now in parliament discussing about the bill, we are getting new comments, new clauses which are not existing in this green book, which are not in the room, and we almost banned the country just because of, eh, distorted information. I'm really happy to see you, and we should be encouraging more of you to participate like the way we are discussing. You see, the way we are discussing, we are learning from you, you are learning from us, we are learning from ourselves, and together, we can make very sound laws for our country without agitation, apprise, end up losing lives, destroying properties, and killing, eh, eh, our democratic space of expression. So thank you so much, and we should be encouraging you to encourage our other colleagues when they have issues, it's an open forum, they will have time, let them express their feelings, and where they feel it should be looked at, so that together we make the law together. What we are discussing, we are making this laws, and believe you me, look at the outcome of this particular report, it will be carrying weight of what you are contributing.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
I thank you so much, um, for that presentation, and, eh, I'm happy to see you every year, eh, you are coming to do presentation. Members, thank you very much for your patience, and, eh, I think we have come. Oh, yes, my friend. Yes, it is from your team.
You come forward, introduce yourself.
Yeah.
So come by the team as well, we were worried.
It's fifty-fifty.
It's fifty-fifty.
And you call yourself, you, Weka?
A youth organization.
This gentleman is a youth?
Yes.
Okay, introduce yourself.
My name is Harrison Manga, um, not really part and parcel of Weka, but supporting them, and that's why I didn't feel the need to, to take up space, thank you.
So thank you very much, um, members, um, I think it's today we have done very well. We are at twelve minutes to, or thirteen minutes to seven, we have done very well. I think last time I was here on Wednesday, I think we finished at what time? Around eight or nine. There being no other business. The meeting stands and John, until tomorrow. Tuesday, twenty-seventh. May, what time? Nine thirty. Thank you very much, eh, thank you very much, eh, secretaries for good work and be patient.